Good evening. I want to welcome everybody to the July 16th, Irma Town Council meeting. It is approximately 6:30. And I would like to call this meeting to order. If I could have the pledge of allegiance, we'd all stand up and pledge allegiance. That would be great. An approval of the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, thank you. Item five, reading of the minutes from June 18th, 2024. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Report of standing, administrative briefing. Courtney, what do you have?
Mr. Mayor, I provided y'all the administrative briefing in your packet. The only thing I wanted to add is today, Will was not able to attend, so we have Cali in his place. If we have any legal questions, obviously, we have Mr. Jake Moore here as well. Cali can definitely guide us if we get into a jam.
So, we've upgraded today. Don't tell Will that, though. You know I love him, but clearly I've upgraded. All right, thank you. New in-town businesses, seen none, although I did ask this earlier today, and there's a whole bunch pending, so it's not like we're quiet here. Consideration of communications. First one up is the recognition of Southern Cuts Barbering Company as the July 2024 Small Businesses of the Month. I would welcome Amanda Morrison, her team, to come up front. Here. Up front.
Come up.
Amanda.
Hey, how are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Nice to meet ya.
This, my lord, this is it. Come on in.
Wrap around.
Wrap around? I show my back back here. So it's not at the front?
Yep, come on. Come on.
I'm tall with it.
There you go. All right, now you've blocked me out.
Oh, you can get up here with us here. We'll do like this.
I'm just kidding. I gotta show them the plaque, that's all. Okay. All right. July, this is July, okay?
Yes.
This is the Town of Irma, presented to Southern Cuts Barbering Company in recognition of being the Small Business of the Month for the Town of Irma, July 2024. Congratulations.
Aw, thank you.
Could you share a little bit about?
Yeah.
About the location? I know I met you when you first opened, you probably just don't remember that, but that's okay.
Oh, yeah, I do remember. I remember meeting you.
Good cover.
Yeah, we're just so thankful to our community and all of our people, and the people who work with us, and if it wasn't for all of you guys, none of this would be possible.
Business is good?
Business is good.
That's great.
It really is. And, you know, we just, we couldn't be more blessed, and we're just so thankful to be here, you know?
And we have a great owner.
Aw, thank you so much. We have the best team, we honestly do. You know Ms. Deb over there?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I know you do. You've been around here for a long time. This is our community, I mean, what greater honor could there be to be up here where we grew up at?
Absolutely. I also like the fact that the only guy standing up here just said congratulations to the entire team, so.
Yeah.
Smart guy.
He's pretty awesome. Yeah, we got a good one.
So, congratulations, thank you for being here.
Aw, thank you so much. We appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Okay. We have a special presentation tonight. And I would like Mr. Jake Moore to come on up, if you would, please. You don't need to knock. Okay? I'm still trying to figure out how we can drag this out as long as possible. That's fine. This, this council, I can speak for all of us, but I really can speak for myself from the heart. You have done things for this town over the last 40 years, however many years it's been. Somehow, someone got the bright idea of firing you a few years ago, which was the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. But we fixed that, and we are so happy to have you and your team here. But tonight, tonight it's about you. It's about you. So, I'm gonna read this, and I'm gonna ask you to bear with me, folks, because it's a lot. Courtney, when he gave this to me earlier today, he said, "Make sure you drink water before you start reading this." Okay. This is a proclamation from the Town of Irma. A proclamation, and I'm gonna try to get through this without some emotion. Proclamation of the Town Council of Irma, South Carolina, dedicating the Irma Community Park to Mr. Jake Moore. Whereas the Town of Irma has been enriched by the tireless efforts envisioned of Mr. Jake Moore, whose contributions have significantly shaped the Irma community and the Midlands at large. And whereas Mr. Moore's dedication to family is exemplified by his loving marriage to Rebecca, Becky Moore, who's here tonight, I just ad-libbed that, Becky, his three children and his beautiful grandchildren, who bring him extreme joy. Whereas Mr. Moore, graduate of Presbyterian College and the University of South Carolina School of Law, has established himself as a leading figure in the legal community, as the founding senior partner of Moore Bradley Myers, excelling in various fields including civil litigation, criminal litigation, local government, administrative law, and education law. Whereas Mr. Moore has served the legal profession of the community with distinction, being an esteemed member of the South Carolina Trial Lawyers Association and the American Board of Trial Advocates. And whereas his commitment to community serves to further demonstrated by his former board membership with Keep the Midlands Beautiful, his four-year term as chairman of the Board of Visitors of the University of South Carolina, and the involvement with the South Carolina Legislative Order Council. And whereas his leadership extends beyond the professional career, as evidenced by his roles as chairman of the Board of Visitors and the founder of Boe's Fargo Pro 10 Tennis Classic, and active participation in the West Columbia Beautification Committee and the Irma Arbor Day Committee. And whereas Mr. Moore has significantly impacted the lives of many through his sustained support of the family promise ministry, lifting numerous homeless families out of poverty. And whereas as a charter member of the Ashland United Methodist Church, Mr. Moore has inspired and guided many through his 40 years of teaching Sunday School. And whereas Mr. Moore's passion for conservation and literacy has driven him to engage deeply within the community, including visiting students at many schools to promote literacy through his co-authored book, Bruce Demuth's, which my granddaughter owns, and initiating the donation of trees to various local entities. And whereas Mr. Moore's commitment to education is reflected in his generous scholarship donations for Presbyterian College and his 20 years of service as an alumni advisor for the Phi Kappa Alpha Fraternity at Presbyterian College. And whereas his dedication to civic and community engagement has been recognized by numerous accolades, including Ambassador of the Year by the Irma Chamber of Commerce, Citizen of the Year by the West Columbia Chamber of Commerce, the Golden Acorn Award from the South Carolina Forests Association, and the Leadership Award from the Mid-Carolina Cooperative Lexington Soil Conservation District. Whereas Mr. Moore's commitment to the community is further exemplified by his efforts to secure land, for and establish the Irma Veterans Park, creating a lasting tribute to the service and sacrifice of our veterans. And whereas the impact of Mr. Moore's dedication is felt throughout the Midlands, as he has consistently demonstrated, a profound commitment to enhancing the quality of life for all residents through his advocacy and community service. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that this 16th day of July 2024, the Town Council of Irma, South Carolina hereby dedicates the Irma Community Park to Mr. Jake Moore in recognition of his unwavering dedication to the vision of the Town of Irma and his numerous contributions to the betterment of the Irma community and the Midlands. Be it further proclaimed that the Irma Community Park be named Moore Park. An official plaque will be placed on the amphitheater to bring attention to Mr. Moore and his countless contributions to the Town of Irma and the Irma community. Sign today, my seal, as well as all council members, dedicating to you. Come on up, folks, come on. I got everybody here but one grandchild. Come on up, y'all. Come on. Come on, Morec. Come on. Come on, don't be shy. Come on. That's, that is so nice. I mean, that, again. Come up by the plaque so people can see. Okay. All right. That, come on, Becky. Don't be shocked. You're welcome. The floor is yours.
You know, I am totally overwhelmed, totally overwhelmed. Those of you who know me, I'm seldom at a loss for words, but I am legitimately at a loss for words. This is beyond anything I could have ever expected. I have been privileged to be involved with this town for, I believe, 47 years now. It was 1,200 residents when we started. You know, when you've got people like our town administrator, like Wickline, like Bobby Dale, like you guys, it is just an honor to have been able to do a little something for the town from time to time. I do, I was driving to work this morning, driving down St. Andrew's Road, and those Craig Myrles just sort of jumped out at me, it's just like, love. But what's amazing is the degree of support and love and affection and commitment and dedication the people who live here have. It's an honor to live in this community, it's an honor to be able to maybe make a little contribution here and there. And Bible says basically, to whom much is given, much is expected. And, you know, if, with everything that's been bestowed on me by this community, I've been given so much from this town and from this community, I can never pay y'all back for what you've done for us. And I love you, and I just want you to know that all of you, I just, I appreciate, but this means more to me than you have any idea. It's the biggest honor I've ever received, and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you to the family for sharing this man. I mean, it is tremendous, and we're not done with him yet, so. We're gonna keep knocking the door.
Okay, we're still here, too.
Thank you all.
I think that's it.
I gotta make just a personal observation. My wife is in, is out of town, not here to babysit me as usual, and I left without my sport jacket. But, thank God, I'm not wearing it, because I am sweating bullets under the shirt, in undershirt, because that is probably the most moving and most important thing I've done in my five years serving at this Town of Irma. So, just wanted to let you know how important that is, and hopefully I didn't word jumble too much of that, but that was a lot to read, and I think that's probably just a portion of what Mr. Moore has done. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to business. And I do want to mention that we have the artist of the quarter. You will see some of this Jen Carmel, hope I got that right, and you will see some of her work in Town Hall. Beautiful work, very nice, so please come by the Town Hall and stop by and say hello and see it. Is Jen here by any chance? Well, thank you, Jen, for everything you do. Next up, Community Connections. And I am gonna turn that over to Councilwoman Wolf.
Thank you. The first item on our Community Connections today is, "Hall Cop Says Stop, Aye in Plain Sight." This is a presentation by Officer Jermaine Galloway, sponsored by the Irma Police Department, on Friday, July 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Harbison Theater at Midlands Tech. This is a free event, but registration is required. It's open to parents, educators, and community members, but only to adults. This is an opportunity to learn how to prevent substance abuse in our community and how to recognize signs of substance abuse. There's going to be a back-to-school vaccine clinic on July 29th, 30th, and 31st at the Lexington County Health Department. That is on South Lake Drive in Lexington. Parents will need to call to schedule an appointment. The vaccines are free, but there may be a bill for an administrative fee. There are several back-to-school events coming up in the next couple of weeks. One is the Irma Strong Community Back-to-School Kickoff on August 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Irma High School. There will be a Harbison back-to-school event at the Juicy Crab, that's at 1304 Bauer Parkway on August 3rd at 2:00 p.m. The Richland County Recreation Commission is having a back-to-school bash on August 4th, 6:00 p.m. at Friars Gate Park. And there will also be a free backpack giveaway on Saturday, July 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., presented by Rise Church in the Irma Community Park, the Moore Park. There will be giveaways, free food, live music, haircuts, sports, physicals, and more. On August 6th, there'll be the National Night Out in the Irma Community Park. This is from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Also in the community park, there'll be Zumba in the park on August 9th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. They are also coordinating a school supply drive, so bring any school supplies you'd like to donate to sharing God's love that night. There will be a shred day, a community shred day, on August 10th in the Irma Community Park, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is for residents of Irma, so bring your documents that need to be shredded on that day. And that concludes.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the presentation by citizens, and this is Agenda Items nine and 10 only. Again, it's a presentation, it's three minutes, and we ask that you hold to that. This is not a conversation, not a question-and-answer period, it's purely a presentation by you as citizens to the council for the agenda items. I see no one signed up to speak, but I would ask if there's been a change of heart and anybody wants to speak at this point on the Agenda Items nine and 10. Seeing none, hearing none, we move on. Unfinished business, item nine, we have none. Must be doing well. I don't know, getting stuff done. New business, item 10. Roman numer 10, new business. First reading of ordinance 2411 to amend Appendix A, zoning and land development regulations, Article 3, zoning regulations for use of lots, by adding Section 3-11-traffic analysis. This is brought to us by the Planning Commission. This will require a traffic impact analysis if a development exceeds 50 trips per peak hour, to be administered by the town and paid for by the developer. I would ask that Courtney and/or Doug bring this forward to explain this analysis to us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think, do you want to take a motion and?
Yeah, I can do that. Motion to, don't move. Second? Or second? All right, having been motioned, you guys want to handle this?
Doug will give you a break.
Sure, we went over this at workshop last week, but basically, whenever a development requires more than 100 trips at peak hour currently, the South Carolina Department of Transportation requires a traffic analysis to be done by the developer. What this ordinance would do is to put that power back in the hands of the town, and also to tighten it up a little bit, so whenever we have a development that would require 50 trips at peak hour, which would be 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, or 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, and that's just kind of based on national standards for what kinds of businesses and developments and residential neighborhoods hit those peak numbers. We would hire a traffic engineer, and that would be refunded to us by the developer, but then we would supervise and manage that traffic analysis and ensure that the best possible outcomes are given back to the developers, part of their requirement, when they build their, you know, restaurant strip mall housing development, whatever's going to be.
Further discussion, questions?
I just think that this reflects the council's interest in, first of all, appreciation, Doug, for putting it together, and the council's interest in recognizing that traffic is a challenge in a lot of parts of Irma, and we shouldn't yield all that ground to CDOT and be involved a little bit earlier in the process.
Yield.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if I might add just one more.
Absolutely. This further restricts and tightens our requirements, that's the important thing.
It does. If this passes second reading, one of the first steps we'll have to take is put an RFQ out for an engineer, so that may take another 30 days once this is passed before we can start rolling it out. We'll have to go seek out an actual engineer to be on call for us, so that could take us about 30, 45 days after second reading, just so you're aware.
Okay. Given that there's no other questions or comments, I will call on a clerk. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sigenture?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes. Thank you, Renee. Next up, item B, approval of Resolution 2408, adopting the Lexington County Animal Control Ordinance changes. This is brought to us by the staff. This will adopt Lexington County Ordinance 2403, which amends their animal control ordinance previously adopted by the Town Council. Is there a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, Courtney, you want to explain this one to us?
Sure, as mentioned in the resolution, so recently Lexington County updated their animal control ordinance. animal control ordinance. Town Council has previously adopted both Lexington and Richland Counties' animal control ordinances. We've been doing that since at least 2001, from my knowledge. The updates in this latest version from Lexington County dealt with the sale or rehoming of dogs, whether with or without a fee, unless they're registered through a breeding registration program. It also requires microchipping, be registered with the owner's name, phone number, and address, implanted in any dog, and it also requires that Animal Services no longer allows the sale of rehoming at flea markets unless meeting the standards as a fancier.
Will you call fancy? Any other questions, comments?
I just think it's important to note that we need to do this if Lexington County is going to operate in the town of Ermo.
All right, hearing no other questions, will the clerk read the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item up, see, Approval to Contract with Will and Chris Amusement in the Amount of $15,000 for amusement rides at the 2024 Lexington Medical Ermo Oakrastrut. This is brought by the Ermo Oakrastrut Commission. Do I hear a motion? Some move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, call on discussion. I would like to say that I've been trying to pay very close attention to the Oakrastrut in coming to the meetings, so this stuff doesn't come out of left field. I want to make sure that everybody knows, and Mr. Ward, the chairman, is here, if you need me, or if you need to jump in and I misspeak, please do. This is one of the important things that we think will improve from last year to this year. Some major attractions, this is in the budget, it's already been approved by the council, so this is merely a formality, but I will take, and I'm sure Mr. Ward will entertain any questions if we have any. Hearing none, seeing none, I would ask Clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item up, the Approval to Contract with CNY Attractions in the Amount of $9,445 for amusement games at the 2024 Lexington Medical Ermo Oakrastrut. This is brought to us by the Ermo Oakrastrut Commission. Is there a motion? Some move?
Second.
Okay, having been appropriately motioned, we'll entertain comments or questions. Again, I can mention this is part of it, and this is something, this is the first time these folks have been involved, but the specific games, I don't have off the top of my head, but it's pretty cool, so I wouldn't... Go ahead. Mayor, pro temp.
Yeah, I was just interested in what I'm seeing in those pictures there. Is it like a video game trailer and laser tag? Laser tag, what else? Yeah, come on up, Mike. I'll use my authority to say, come on up to the mic.
Good evening, everybody. So, CNY has proposed to bring a laser tag game, a video game trailer, and...
Obstacle.
Obstacle course, I was trying to figure out the right word there, to the park and set them up in addition to the amusement rides that we're going to be using by Will and Chris. This will be, we had Will and Chris out last year, and that was a change from our previous vendor. Will and Chris has amazing amusement rides. They're just not necessarily built for bigger kids, maybe 12 to 15, 16-year-olds, so these here would be more geared towards a little bit of the older population of children that attend the strut, and so we think this will be a great addition. Laser tag, he can pretty much set up anywhere, so we'll be able to set them up in the trees in the back of the amusement area and allow some of the natural foliage to be used as their gaming territory.
Might also add that CNY is a local vendor.
They are, and they're very, very, very involved in Ermo and lots of events in the community.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none, I will call on the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Item E. This is the Approval to Purchase Four Dodge Durango Police Vehicles Under the State Contract in the Amount of $177,529 from Elderton Dodge. This will purchase three patrol vehicles and one detective vehicle. These items, oop, sorry, motion? Some move? Having been appropriately motioned, Courtney and/or Chief, you want to explain that these are in the budget and are normal replacements and all that good stuff?
They are, they're in the budget, and now that we've loaded our new fiscal year, obviously the police want to go ahead and get their vehicles ordered. These are coming from a Dodge dealership just in North Carolina, but they do have a South Carolina state contract. Typically, in the past, council has been given just one approval item, but that's because the vendor we were using did the other steps that you're going to see in your next approvals. So, that's why it's broken out here today with the radios and the radars and things separately. And I believe the chief might be able to elaborate a little bit more on timing of the vehicles.
So, we spoke with Elderton Dodge within the past couple of months, and they're building out the Durangos for us, so they should be coming in pretty soon. As soon as they come in, they'll go to the upfitting, assuming that all the items get approved this evening, and then within about four to six weeks, depending on parts, they should be ready to hit the road, which is good timing. We're getting rid of, these four cars will be replacing two Impalas and two Caprices. So, our fleet won't have any more Caprices, and we're getting to where we'll have about three or four Impalas left, which is a good thing. They're bleeding us in maintenance right now.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, seeing none, Renee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, Approval to Outfit Four Police Vehicles Through Palmetto Upfitters LLC in the Amount of $49,446. This will outfit three patrol vehicles and one detective vehicle with lights, cages, push bumpers, vaults, and labor. Again, this and then Item G, E, F, and G were normally brought in together. Is there a motion? Some move? Some move? Having been appropriately motioned, questions, comments?
I don't think chief would appreciate us authorizing vehicles without corresponding equipment, so...
Beats chasing all my foot.
So, of course you're footed.
Okay, hearing none, seeing none?
Mr. Mayor, if I might just add, this is a change in our previous vendor on this item. We had historically used West Chatham for a very number of years, at least 10, as far as I remember, so we did take three competitive quotes to make this change to Palmetto. The reason for the shift is West Chatham is doing just such an extreme volume, they're located over in Lexington, and if we would send them to them now, we would be waiting quite a long time. So, we did speak to the owner over there, he understands that we're making the shift, and we did go out and get three competitive quotes that you were approving tonight.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
I just have one question for the chief, just for my education, what is a vault?
So, in some of the vehicles, like a SUV or truck, they would have a trunk, so these vaults are, they're basically like a safe, so that we can open it, put items in there that are secure, like weapons. I'll show it to you sometime if you'd like.
As long as I'm not under arrest. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, seeing none, will you call the roll, please, Renee?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G, which runs out the trio here, Approval to Purchase Three Speed Radars Under the State Contract from Applied Concepts, Inc., in the Amount of $8,063, brought to us by the Police Department. These are Stalker Speed Radars, and they are assuming for the three new vehicles we're getting. We'll entertain a motion. Some move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, is there further discussion?
Yeah, if we get these, they're going to be used, right? We're going to cut down on speeding more now, so we're going to have more guns, is that right?
That's the plan, Mr. Council.
All right.
Radar guns?
Yeah, radar.
You want us to shoot this?
No, no, not yet.
I don't think we can possibly have enough.
No.
I have a question about these. Do these work on council member vehicles, too?
Absolutely.
Anything but red.
They don't work on red vehicles.
Okay, will you call the roll? Renee?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
And sorry, I misspoke, we have a fourth part of this, which was on page two, I should have just memorized. Item H, Approval to Purchase Three Police Radios Under State Contract from Motorola Solutions in the Amount of $20,635 for the Police Department. These police radios are for the patrol vehicles. Is there a motion? Some move?
Second.
Okay, having been appropriately motioned, I will remind everyone that these normally get lumped into one acquisition, that's why we're doing four, because we're using different vendors, as Courtney already stated. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none, Renee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item I, Approval to Contract with South Carolina Career Kids to Conduct Three Safety Town Pop-Ups in School Field Trips in the Amount of $10,500. The Safety Town Pop-Ups would be held at Ermo Elementary, H.E. Corley Elementary, and Dutch Fork Elementary in the town of Ermo. Is there a motion? Some move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, we look for discussion. My name is on this, so we have discussed this investment in our community at length in the workshops, and there's two items on this agenda tonight that are exactly that. So, I would ask that there were any other comments or questions from the council?
I had the opportunity to participate, as did Mayor Dale Danielson, and I can't underscore the importance of supporting this in the community.
Anything else? Anybody? All right, hearing no other questions or comments, Renee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Next item, J, Approval of Contract with Universal Leadership STEM Academy in the Amount of $30,000 towards the purchase of two buses for their after-school and summer camp programs. This contract would provide initial funds for Universal Leadership to purchase two buses for the school programs and to allow for them to rent to the town when the town needs buses in the event of, in the event of functions, Oakrastrut, skate park events, those kind of things. Is, I will entertain a motion. Some move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned, I will entertain questions.
No questions, I think, you know, we've put a significant amount of the town resources towards supporting the Universal and STEM Academy, and for good reason, because it's a really important project and a really important work that's being done in the community. And, you know, we see over time and time again the impact of, what kind of impact adults and leaders and teachers can have on youth. And as challenging as things may be today for some families or for some kids, it's really heartening to see people come together and do things like I see Career Kids and the Universal Academy, and I'm glad that we're able to get a little bit of use out of it when we need it as well.
It's important to note that these are partnerships we're forming to help the youth in this town, and these are, these are two ways that we can do that and continue our work, because the kids are one of the most important things that we can do here, and since we're not responsible for their direct education, we can certainly help with some of these other programs. So, with that, I will, no other questions or comments, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Siginger?
Yes.
Mayor Danielson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item K, Approval to Host the 2025 Ermo Concert Series, not to exceed $45,000 from the Hospitality Fund. This is brought to us by the staff. The town will organize and host a concert series on April 25th, May 2nd, and May 9th, 2025, at the Moore Park, featuring live bands consisting of tribute slash cover band music. Is there a motion? Some move?
Second.
Having been appropriately motioned and seconded, I will add that we've been working diligently, and that's in your attachment, there's a group that's been working diligently to bring revenue production to our beautiful park and use the amphitheater. Even though the number is 45, we hope that that's just the seed money, we will get that back, plus profit, and that is attached. The bands would be pretty highly sought after, and would be, and this is really a trial balloon for the town of Ermo to see what we can do, and how we can compete with other paid venue events in this, in this market, in the Midlands. We've got the, in my mind, well, we're not on the river, so I'll take that out, but in my mind, we've got the most beautiful venue that you could possibly have for something like this, so, and it is the Moore Park, I might add. So, I will entertain any other questions.
Yeah, I think the, for a decade or more, councils have talked about, either when they ran or when they are on council, about how beautiful the Moore Park is, and how we should be having concerts at the park more regularly, and residents complaining that we don't do an ice house kind of thing, and while this is not going to be binary, it's not going to go from zero to ice house, it certainly gets us, moving that direction allows us to kind of test out that concept of concerts at the park, and I'm excited to see what happens, but I think the other piece, and just for me, and I think it was probably added in there because I pointed it out during the workshop, but this is coming from hospitality funds, which are carved-out funds that can only be spent on particular defined uses, this is not coming from the general budget, and our hope is that it does drive hospitality and commerce in the town as well.
Mayor, I'd just like to say, in general, I think this is a beautiful thing in terms of Ermo... of Ermo being a destination for art activities in general. You know, earlier we had the classical music series, and then now we're having this music series, and it's just great to know that Ermo might be identified as a place for great art entertainment.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Having hearing, seeing none, hearing none, I will ask Renee to call the roll.
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Okay. Last item, L, appointment to the Oakstra Commission. There is one unexpired term to be filled. Applications have been received, this is a voting roll, I believe, applications have been received by Michelle Carpenter, Dawn Silly, Beth Niederstadt, Glenn Nioma, and Lindsay Valick. With that, I will entertain a motion for a nomination.
I'll make a motion for Dawn Silly.
Okay, there's a first and a second for Dawn Silly. And are there any other comments, questions?
Uh, just to, oh, just to make a note that Dawn Silly also comes recommended by the Oakstra Commission, and we rely on their guidance.
Okay, the nomination on the floor is for Dawn Silly. Renee, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Penfield?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
No, but I want to qualify why. I did not have an opportunity to see any of the applications, and in fairness to all applicants, I don't have knowledge of this person, so I would like to abstain if anything.
Dr. Waldman?
Yes.
Mr. Sickinger?
Yes.
And Mayor Danielson?
Thank you. Thank you. That, the, Councilwoman has a pretty good point there. I think there's a way we can beef up these applications to give us some more depth, and I'm not sure why it wasn't in your package on the tail end, but they're very scant as they are, so I don't know that if we can move forward, do something a little different there, Courtney, just as far as these apps are concerned, give us a little more information.
It was an inherited application.
Yeah, I think, and I think those app, apps were unfilled, but she makes a, Councilwoman makes a very good point. Okay, thank you all for that. Now we are at item 11, which is presentation by citizens on any matter that you feel you want to present to us, same thing as before, three minutes, not a conversation, not a Q and A. There is no one signed up. If someone has, would like to change their mind and come forward, please give your name and address, and keep it to the three minutes. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Nicole Sanchez, I live at 1236 Old Brickyard Road. I wanted to comment about the funding that we're giving to kids to foster more education for them, which I love. I very much am thrilled that we are investing in our youth. My only comment about it is that I would like us to also consider emphasizing more these social sciences as well. Civics, history, literature, these are areas that are also important to our youth, to foster critical thinking and to get our children to the point where they can actively participate in our government and our democracy. And if this is something that we don't emphasize, it's not something that they will learn as readily. So I just ask that in the future, you consider something more social science related as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez, very, very good point. Anyone else? Oh, here he comes. Come on, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Ward, 118 Ashbourne. It's all good. There we go. I want to speak as the Oakstra Commissioner for just a moment. I want to echo a support from, in regards to Councilwoman Coleman and Mayor Danielson's comment about the applications that we received. There were, I've seen several applications come through where there are blank fields, and I had a conversation with Dr. Waldman as well, where some of these fields that are being left blank are pretty critical, such as what are the qualifications that you have that make you feel like you're worthy of this position? And so I would definitely support something to encourage some improvement on those forms. I think if you have the desire to fill out a form to volunteer for the town, you're going to fill out all of the required fields. As humans, sometimes we get lazy and we just blow through what's not required, so I would definitely encourage that. The other thing I wanted to bring up, which is a new topic that I've had some discussion on the sides, but again, this, this comes from me as the commission chair, but also as a concerned citizen. We've had situations with individuals and moral choices of how they live their life. So we are picking folks to run events in the town. Most of these events, if not all of these events, are family-friendly and family-oriented. So I would encourage the council and the town to consider implementing some sort of background check to help validate and not prove somebody's worthiness, but just validate that they don't have a criminal background that would put the town or any of the commissions at risk if something else were to happen. Those are my comments for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Again, valued comments, and we'll certainly take them into consideration. Yes, ma'am, you know, when you're ahead, you really don't need to go anywhere, but you're already on the winning side of the record.
I know, and I just wanted to come up, I'm Katie Wiggs, SC Career Kids, 1704 Quail Valley West. I wanted to come up and thank the police department and the fire department and town council members for coming and supporting all the things that we've been doing throughout the last couple of years, but especially for Safety Town. The police department were super, super engaged. They asked, hey, can we come back? And I said, you know, we hadn't planned on it, but please do. And so they came back, and that was the ask of, we had two four-year-olds and five-year, two four, one four-year-old, one five-year-old, that was just super scared of the police. I've seen it in the news, and I thought, this doesn't happen in our small town of Ermo, but they would not go inside any classroom that the police were in. They would not, they would cry, they would hang on to our legs, and so throughout those four days that we had those kiddos, they were able to develop a relationship. And that was a huge outcome that we didn't really even expect. So I just wanted to thank you, and I also want you to be invited into anything that we do to kind of check out what SC Career Kids is about, because I think a lot of what you are saying is some things that we're doing, and we're always looking for volunteers. So please, I know in our Safety Town program, we called it Safe, they were Safe Citizens, and we gave them a little certificate that they learned the rules of the road, they learned their phone number, they would get up and interact with adults, so just talking about citizenship, we actually had somebody come and talk about passports. So it was, it was a really a neat thing, and I just, again, thank you for the community, you guys have been wonderful, Mr. Moore, from the very beginning. I think we should have added a little something on your plaque about your help with, with SC Career Kids, but thank you for so much for all that you've done. That's it.
Thank you, Katie. I loved riding the tricycle.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, power your knee.
It was fun, I didn't go far, thank goodness. Yes, sir, Dr. Johnson?
I'm Alonso Johnson, 316 Seapole Crest. I just want to thank you, Mayor Danielson, council, for believing in and supporting what we've been doing the last forty years. ULSA, as we serve kids and families in this community, thank you for past support, as well as your support for this effort to help us get these much-needed vans, which will assist us in a lot of ways to reach the kids. We're having a great time in summer camp right now, about seventy kids, and we'll have that much and a few more for after-school, so these buses will get lots of use, and I too invite anyone who desires to come by and see us and see what we are doing. Like to thank Mr. Dennis specifically for spending time with me, making sure that we got everything together, and the conversations that I've had with others of you, thank you so much for your support and blessings.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up, Dave.
My name is David Stewart, 101 Glossop. I would like to join the council in recognizing the contributions that Jake Moore, Esquire, has made to the town. It has been a good forty years that we've been working together with things on the town. Appreciate your, your presence. The forty years that I have been a resident, I live about seven houses from Matthias Sandwich Shop, which fronts on St. Andrews Road. I am very excited to hear that we're going to get some new radar equipment. I'm from Virginia. I'm acquainted with Martinsville and the race car tradition in the state of Virginia, and I'm pretty sure that a lot of you are acquainted with the same kind of excitement that goes on in this state. The problem is that too many people think St. Andrews is part of that raceway, and I would encourage the chief and the council to put a heavy emphasis on St. Andrews, from whatever the eastern limit of the town boundary is, all the way out St. Dubrovic River Road, because people certainly disregard the speed limit, whether it's when the school is in session with all of the schools in the area using St. Andrews for transportation. And I hope that there will be some kind of concerted effort, now that we have some updated equipment, new vehicles, and with the chief and the staff supporting that, that we can get people to slow down. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to the discuss, I'm sorry, somebody else back there? Come on.
Now, I, um...
Come up to the microphone, please.
Probably don't need a microphone. I know you said this is not a question and answer, and I don't know what else is on the agenda. My name is Lori McCarthy, and I live on Placid Drive, which really isn't in the town limits, we're in Richland County, but we're off Salem Church Road where there's a big proposal about cottages and homes, and that Route Six road from the dam to Ballentine, right now is already a traffic problem, and there's going to be, I don't know how many acres of development. So my husband and I are here tonight because we wanted to find out more information, since that's going to impact us. And the signs that are all over the place down there listed this, tonight, 6:30, 7300 Woodrow is a place to come and hear information. So that's why I'm here, I don't know if it's on the agenda. I don't know if you have anything you can, you know, tell us, but it's a, it's a real concern, because that area is already pretty crazy, and that development's going to make it worse.
Yeah, we have no further information to really share with you at this point, but there will be, there'll be plenty coming. And I live on that road, so I'm...
So you're well aware?
I personally am well aware of what, I have to come in and out of my driveway and my road at least ten times a day, so.
Okay.
I am very aware, but it's not on the agenda tonight, I believe we have a, there's a public hearing.
Well, that's what it said on the sign, that this was a public hearing.
We had to change that. Courtney?
Mr. Mayor, they were originally going to go to Planning Commission in July, which would have brought it here in July, that has been shifted a month to August. From what I've been told, they should have changed the sign, we asked them to and they said they did, but...
They did not.
So there's a Planning Commission, August, what's the, eighth, fifth?
Twelve. So that'll be a, that'll be a Planning Commission meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the one I want to go to.
That's the one you want to come to.
Thank you for, thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay, all right, so we're going to move on to item 12, which is discussion, nothing under that item at the moment. So item 13 is executive session, town council may act on items discussing the executive session. After returning from the executive session, we would go in for a contractual matter, discussion of negotiations, incidents, proposed contractual agreement for the new town hall project. Is there a motion to go on executive session?
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Folks, we'll be back. Aye. Okay, folks, I'd like to call the meeting. Back to order, we are out of executive session. No votes were taken, no actions taken in executive session. At this point, I will ask for an adjournment and make a mo... Have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
There are second, appropriately motioned, all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Gabe?
Gabe.
Gabriel Penfield, councilman.